Tonight, we are excited to host our school board meeting at Georgia F. Morris Elementary School, where the students, with the help from our staff, have increased their API from 7:30 to 8:02. That's a 72-point game in three years. Morris also has one of the highest percentages of English learners in the district. We have a great presentation tonight, but first, please welcome Morris Elementary 3rd grade student, Arturo Morales. He's gonna lead us into the pledge allegiance.
Would you please stand and put your white hand over your heart and ready begin?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to a public full which is and one nation under God, indivisible, and liberty and justice for all.
You may be students.
What we have before us here, we have Morris students from Mrs. Conley and Mrs. Weber's 5th grade classes will perform the district's vision statement, and then a quick presentation of the Anthroplogus Boogaloo from Glad Strategy will be presented by Mrs. Moore's 3rd grade class.
To provide high levels of learning for all students and to inspire people to set goals that maximize their potential.
I am inspired to be a doctor.
I am inspired to find a career path.
I am inspired to go to college and become a professional.
I am inspired.
I am inspired to start a community.
The A and E District, Rialto Unified School District.
And thank you to our parents, guardians, and school staff for supporting our students' performance tonight. Gold mountain lions. This will be the Boogaloo.
I study different cultures every day. The math of mathematics, the math of reading a book, but mostly I go home and take a look. Art of tradition, rituals too, we can have a college boot galoo. I learn about culture in many ways, it gives me the news group I remain. Investigate goals on a young and old before these stories that I've been told. Art of tradition, rituals too, we can have a college boot galoo. If I don't have the right to be yours, you all know, but the way they use this grave is low. I'm just having study a culture too, and doing that college boot galoo.
Our thanks again to the parents and staff, the group and our kids together. This is what it's all about. If we can get the first group to come back, our honorables superintendent would like to make a special presentation. If we could get the first group back. our elementary schools, if there was a class that would memorize the vision or mission statement, we would provide them a field trip to the LA County Museum to see the space shuttle. You've earned that tonight, and we will provide that field trip to you.
The A and E District, Rialto Unified School District.
Next, Dr. Seabrook, we have a report out of closed session.
No action was taken.
Do we have a motion to adopt the agenda?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Mr. Montes.
Thank you. President Ayala, I'd like to add an agenda item for tonight's board meeting under new business. Anywhere between J and L, or J, between J and M would be fine, for new business, to allow the board time if anyone would like to propose any future proposals. So I make a motion to add new business to tonight's board meeting.
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
I'm not sure that's legal to do without 72 hours notice to the public, is my only concern. Otherwise, I would vote with you.
I believe that it applies to taking action on any item, and since it would be new business, we wouldn't be taking action on any particular item. It's just allows the board to have time to propose, make any proposals for future meetings or for the district.
It's a section that was always in board agendas before, as far as I know, in the past.
Even our DLACs and ELACs and school site councils and most of our committees have new business on their agendas.
So are you saying put it after J before K? I'm not understanding.
Anywhere between J and M would be fine. Maybe between L and M.
Because I'm not certain, I'm going to abstain, but you do have my support other than...
Okay. Can we take a vote here? Individually?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye?
Abstain.
Abstain. Motion carries. Okay, let's see, where were we? Okay, we were approving the...
It should be read in.
Public hearing.
Public hearing.
Did we vote on the agenda?
Yeah.
Okay, so we did vote on the agenda? Okay.
No, we didn't.
Okay. We had a motion and a second. All in favor of accepting the agenda?
Aye.
Aye?
Who said motion and second?
We had already adopted the agenda. We had already taken a vote on it. We just approved a motion to add new business on tonight's agenda.
His adoption of the agenda, I show up here, but to me, we're not to the point to accept E through I yet, so we're still way back here. So this is a non-issue at this point.
We're on public hearing.
Yeah, we're at public hearing right now.
At this time, we have comments from the floor. Any person wishing to speak to any item not on the agenda will be granted three minutes to make a presentation. Next, we have comments on agenda items, and we don't have anybody wishing to speak at this time, so...
Mr. Figueroa, did he fill out a card?
I have no card.
Okay. ¿Quiere permiso para hablar? If it's okay with the board president decide.
Yeah, I don't have a problem with that. Please, please come forward, Mr. Figueroa. And Mr. Figueroa, you're gonna be speaking on the agenda item or off the agenda?
¿Va a hablar referente a algo que está en la agenda o que no está fuera?
Alfreda? Alfreda, okay. So it'll be not on the agenda. And you have three minutes.
Mi nombre es Luis Figueroa, soy el presidente de ELAC en la Rialto High School.
This is Mr. Figueroa, president of ELAC in Rialto High School. El motivo que me trae aquí esta noche es para hablar algo acerca de fuera de la agenda de las personas que se encuentran ahora aquí en la escuela Morris. I'm here to speak outside of the agenda to those who are here at Morris. Es para comunicarles a todos las personas encargadas de las escuelas y los padres de familia, que nosotros estamos organizando desde el año pasado una liga de fútbol para todos los niños que están en las escuelas del distrito escolar de Rialto.
Soccer.
I'm here to inform all the parents and family members that since last year, we're in the process of forming a soccer team. Es una liga de fútbol, es soccer league, que es una liga de fútbol para el beneficio de todos los niños del distrito escolar de Rialto y, por supuesto, también de las ciudades vecinas, con el apoyo gracias al Distrito Escolar de Rialto, encabezado por el doctor... It's actually a soccer league, not a soccer team, and this is to benefit all of the students in the Rialto Unified School District, as well as other cities in the area. And we do this with the thanks to the board and Dr. Seabrook. Creo que el doctor Seabrook está informado acerca de esto, no lo sé, pero tenemos el apoyo de varios principales de diferentes escuelas en la ciudad de Rialto. I'm actually not sure if Dr. Seabrook was aware of this, but we do have the support of many teachers and principals within the school district. Esto es para que ustedes sepan y para que se apoyen, y los niños puedan tener algo que cuela y poder trabajar juntos en el deporte. Todo esto es completamente gratuito, no sabemos de dónde vamos a sacar los fondos para poder hacer esto, pero estamos trabajando para poder dar este programa gratuito para todos los niños de aquí de la ciudad de Rialto. This will be an after-school program so that all kids can have something to do after school. We don't know exactly how it's gonna be funded, but we're working toward that. Tenemos el apoyo de varios negocios en la ciudad de Rialto, en donde vamos a poder mantener nuestros baches, como le dicen, el dinero de dónde va a salir para poder pagar estas cosas. Por favor, muchísimas gracias por su atención, y discúlpeme por no haber hablado inglés, porque mi inglés es muy limitado. Espero que me haya entendido en español. Gracias. This is actually gonna be free to parents, and we are gonna try to get sponsorships from different companies within the area. And thank you very much for your time, and excuse my English, I don't speak English very well. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Seabrook.
Which is...
We'd like to schedule a meeting with you and Dan Sosa at the district, so we can see how we could work this out. Maybe we could help too.
Thank you very much, Dr. Seabrook. Thank you.
Next, we have the DSAC presentations, but before we get started, I'd like to make an announcement here. It is with great regret that we inform you of the passing of Mrs. Elizabeth Shantz. She's Rialto Unified School District Secretary 2 of the Purchasing Department. Ms. Shantz passed away on the morning of Sunday, January 6, 2013. If we could have a moment of silence, perhaps about a minute, in her honor, for her family and her friends, I would much appreciate it.
President Ayala, if I could just say a few words regarding Ms. Shantz?
Absolutely.
Just, I just would like to say that I personally was not fortunate enough to know Mrs. Elizabeth Shantz, but I did hear from her various times, and what I can say was that Mrs. Shantz was a real fighter. She fought not only critical illness for many years, but she was also a fighter in the sense that if she wanted to get her point across or didn't agree with someone, she made sure that person knew. And she contacted the board, she spoke to Dr. Seabrook, and she told us exactly how she felt about things that she might not agree with, or things that she was happy about. And she, I just wanted to say that much about her, that she was a fighter, and I do know that about her. So our thoughts and prayers are with her family and friends. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Montes. At this time, Mrs. Yborra, our student board member, would you lead us with the DSAC presentations?
Yes.
Thank you.
First up, we have Mark from Rialto High School.
Good evening, members of the board, Superintendent Dr. Seabrook, members of the cabinet, and members of the audience. My name is Mark Bibien, and I'm the ASB Ambassador of Rialto High School. I hope you all had an enjoyable and relaxable break and are ready to take on the new year with new goals and aspirations. I must say, as a former mountain lion, it feels good to be back home. This Friday night, our four-time, back-to-back league championship girls' basketball team will be playing their first home basketball games against the Carter Kitty... I mean, the Lions, sorry. So I hope you can all join us this Friday at 6:00 PM as we beat the Carter Kitty Lions, sorry. Our knights are excited, are excited, as our first pep rally of the next year is Tuesday to honor our winter sports. This year's theme is bringing back the 90s. We feel this will be our best rally yet, and we're looking forward to it. With prom right around the corner, we are in the process of choosing this year's theme. Juniors and seniors are extremely excited as we prep for a night that we will never forget. Every year, DSAC leaves and marks in the district in one way or another. This year, DSAC has decided that we will start a new tradition called DSAC Recognizing Local Leaders for Black History Month, but I will let the rest of my fellow DSAC members give you more information on that. Thank you for your time and have a great evening.
Up next, we have Yuki from I.
Good evening, board members, Superintendent Dr. Seabrook, cabinet members, and viewing audience. My name is Yuki Bohorcas, and I am the ASB President at Eisenhower High School. We had our first home basketball game on Tuesday night, and I am happy to report to you that your Eagles beat the Cajon Cowboys. Thank you, Dr. Seabrook, and Dr. Wallace, for attending. It was an honor to have you there. Our winter pep rally will be next Friday, January 18. We'll be recognizing our winter sports and announcing the winter formal court. This year, we have an impressive nine girls and six boys running for the spot of winter king and winter queen. The winter formal dance titled Big City Bright Lights will be held Saturday, January 19, at the Sierra Lakes Golf Club. That 2012-2013 DSAC recognition of local leaders for Black History Month, would like to invite you to attend this luncheon held in February 6 at the Cesar Chavez Huerta Center. Eisenhower will select a person who has made an outstanding contribution to the student body. Thank you and have a great evening.
And lastly, we have Kiandra Sutton from Carter High School.
Good evening, Dr. Seabrook and members of the board. My name's Kiandra Sutton, and I'm the senior class president at Carter High School. On April 26, Carter will have their first cancer walk. It's a 24-hour cancer walk, and our first training day is on January 26. Also, our annual winter blood drive will be held on January 25. This time, our goal is 400 units. And currently, our wrestling and boy soccer team is ranked number one in CIF and 44th in the nation, and one of our very own wrestlers, Kenneth Clark, is number six in the state. And thank you for your time and your consideration.
Thank you so much. It's good to see our youth taking responsibility and being proactive and helping out. That gives us confidence in our future. Thank you so much. Next, we have superintendent's report. Dr. Seabrook?
Good evening. We'd like to welcome all of you back for 2013. At our principals' meeting tomorrow, we will be discussing school safety plans. Safety is very important, adults but in the community. As we review those plans with our principals, they will be reviewing those plans with the parents and their community. And those plans are not placed in stone. As they review those plans with the community, we ask you for your input. It's important that we recognize what you hear and what you see in and around the community as it pertains to safety for all of us, and we will address this with all of our energy that we have. I want to thank Gordon Leary for being proactive with working with the various police departments, San Bernardino Police Department, Colton Police Department, Fontana Police Department, and all of those who work very closely with us. He's done an excellent job of that and will continue to do that. So we ask you to, when you think of safety, don't try not to think of what someone else needs to do. If you can concentrate on what you will be doing, we can make this happen. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Dr. Seabrook. Next, we have public information and correspondence. Number one, in case you want to follow with me, I'm on page two. Recap of approved change orders for E-Rate, year 14, October 1, 2012, December 31 to 2012. Number two, recap of approved change orders for Eisenhower High School gym, HVAC, October 1, 2012, December 31, 2012. Item number three, recap of approved change orders for Rialto High School data and wireless technology upgrade, October 1, 2012, December 31, 2012. Item number four, inspection reports, Williams Settlement Legislation Quarterly Uniform Compliance Report Summary. Item number five, schools will be closed Monday, January 21, 2013, in honor of Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. Item number six, a reminder, the next regular meeting of the Board of Education is scheduled for Wednesday, January 23, 2013, at 7:00 PM at the Dr. John R. Casalunas Education Center, 182 East Walnut Avenue, Rialto, California. Next, we have the Consent Calendar Action Section. All matters listed under the consent calendar are considered by the Board of Education to be routine and to be enacted in one motion. There will be no discussion of these items prior to the time the board considers the motion unless members of the board, the minis, or the public request specific items to be discussed and/or removed from the consent calendar. Do I have a motion to accept items E through I?
I have two items I would like to discuss, H3 and H4.
H3?
And I'd also like to hear what was added to this section. That needs to be read in before we can accept it.
I move that. I motion?
Okay, so we have a...
I motion that we approve items...
E through I with exception of H, and we can vote on H separately. Do we have a second? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. So we're gonna vote on E through I with exception of H, and we'll vote on H separately.
Aye.
Okay?
Mr. President, we added something to the agenda, and yet it is silent. The public does not know what that is.
Are we talking about the new business?
Yes, yes.
Okay.
That needs to be read before we have a copy.
Let's...
Then I can read, then I can vote.
Okay. It doesn't have a letter, an item. It was a...
Title.
It was a recommendation by one of our board members, Board Member Montes, that we add a category called New Business, and we'll add it to our agenda at a future time, and the motion passed three to two.
Yes, I can, I can also vote yes then.
Okay. So we're okay with that. All right, so then, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Of what?
E through I with exception of H.
Aye.
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 Okay, so let's open up item H, Business and Financial Consent Items, and we're looking at specifically...
There's four items.
There's four items, and we omitted H, so let's go ahead and read them all, and then we'll, we'll discuss three and four. Under item H, number one, approved warrant listing, register for funds sent under separate cover to board members. Copies for public review will be available at the board meeting. General Fund, number one, $3,231,772.17. General Obligation Bond Fund, number 21, is $303,341.11. Fund subtotal is $3,530,118.28. Nutritional Services Fund, number 13, $624,956 for a grand total of $4,160,074.28. Number two, approved purchase order listings, sent under separate cover to board members. Copies for public review will be available at the board meeting. Under items for discussion was number three... Under items for discussion was number three under H, approved listed contracts and agreements for consultant services, reference H3 point one. And Ms. O'Kelly, you had discussion?
Yeah, there were two items on the contract page that I had wanted to discuss. The first one is, what is the purpose of hiring the Dolinka Group for $35,000? Why do we need an expensive, in-depth study of the redevelopment project areas? What are the redevelopment project areas and what are pass-through payments? The description did not make much sense to me, so if I could have some clarification.
Dr. Seabron?
Muhammad.
Thank you, Ward. These items is, as you know, the Redevelopment Agency, District Rialto, University of the School of St. are entitled to get some funding, pass-through money coming to the city, RDA, to the districts. We're entitled under the legislation, the contract going back 1980 plus, '88, '89. The point I make, the reason I bring this consultant to review, to ensure the district getting fair share. As you know, the RDA is a major fiasco to the state audit. Discovery that the district did not getting the fair share, also to the audit, state controllers audit, recognized that the state, city hasn't reported the right amount they're collecting to the RDA. So my purpose of bringing this item to the board, bringing in a consultant, to review all this RDA project. Rialto University of the School of St. is entitled in terms of funding coming through us, whether we're getting our share of the funding unlike other districts, you know, Colton, Ontario, Montclair, those are part of their project. So it is, we do know how much we're getting, but we don't know whether we're getting our fair share. And this is very complicated projects, you know, not, it requires somebody has a specialty to, beginning of this RDA through now, make sure we're getting our share.
When you say RDA, sorry.
Do you anticipate getting significantly more than the $35,000 we're going to pay the company?
Based on my conversation with the other districts, there's a major discrepancy, district not getting right fair share. So I don't know the answer right now, that's why I want to go through the audit. It's pretty much in-depth review, and the consultant will be working through the C, Redevelopment Agency office, getting all the contract and all the collections and revenue they receive, and review all the contract we have, what is our percentage and the dollar we're supposed to receive, all the way from the beginning of the contract up to present. So it's a lot of work, and at this time, I cannot say for guarantee, are we getting more than 35? Many districts, Anderson, get substantial amount. That's my conversation with neighbor districts and other districts who engage this consulting firm.
And just for clarification, when you say redevelopment, are you speaking of the redevelopment agency for the city?
Yes.
The city of Rialto?
Yes.
And what about the neighboring cities?
Well, the part of the contract, every city has a RDA, Redevelopment Agency. Some of the project cross to, like Rialto to Ontario, Montclair, because we're neighboring districts. So certain dollar comes to the Rialto, certain dollar goes to the other districts. So there's an agreement in place. So we know what we're getting, but we don't know whether we're getting our right share. That been my concern, that's why I want to, I call this a good investment for Rialto University of the School of St. Invest $35,000 to ensure we're getting our fair share of the money and everything comply with the contract and the law.
And now, is this for past redevelopment agency money? It's my understanding redevelopment agencies were no longer funded.
It's the past. It's not now. Nothing, you know, what happened in the past. The money, they're still collecting it and goes to the state. We get, money goes to the state, and state pays, you know, in the form of the revenue. So we're not collecting from city anymore. City has to report this, and it comes to the county government as an agency of the state.
Okay.
So it's very interesting to know, and I will report this back to the board once the complete audit is done for all the projects, and you'll get a report.
And it says NTE, so it's not to exceed. It doesn't necessarily mean we're going to spend the whole 35.
Yeah, that's the max, you know, that they will, they'll be working through now, through June, gathering the data, doing the review, all the documents, and coming back to the board as a formal report. You'll be getting a report back.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
The other area I had a problem with, I just want to kind of go over this real quickly. Even though the amount of money was reduced for the contract with the AEG Ontario Arena for the high school graduations, you know, as a former high school principal, I have to say that I am very much against having graduations at the Ontario Arena. They are much more personal and meaningful when they are at the school site, and I know at Eisenhower, that was always a very, very special night for us. I realize before I was on the board that this has already been approved for this year, but I really feel that it is an unnecessary use of funds when we could do it at our school sites, and I think everybody would enjoy it more. But I just want to go on record as saying that I know I can't change that it was already approved, but I am not in agreement with it.
And for the record, I would also like to make that a no vote again for that specific contract. I don't have a problem with the rest of them. So I don't know if we should separate that one from the rest of them?
I also had one question about H4.
Yes, and let's go ahead, and then we'll vote on each one separately.
Okay, and this is probably one directed to Muhammad again. We have two donations listed from NEF Construction and NTD Architecture. Now, I recall that those donations from those companies were rescinded on November 14th because we never received them. Have we received the money? Because we shouldn't be voting on it if the money has not been received.
The previous board item you're referring to is to correct the prior board actions with an assumption that district received the money. This tonight's agenda is that, if you read the donation, there's a purpose for the business partnership account. So this is the money is received now, yes. We have the money in our bank. I mean, the previous one is to correct the reporting, board received that district received the money, it was not, we haven't received that money. This is, we got money now. Has nothing to do with the previous agenda. It is something we invite them to support our retreat we're planning in summer.
Okay.
So this is a new item.
Just wanted to make sure the money was there.
Yeah, this, money, everything you say on agenda, money, we received, yes.
Okay.
Can I call for a vote then for H1, 2, 4? Do omnibus and vote on those three separate? Do we have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. On H3, do we have a motion to accept? So moved.
Second.
And I, it's aye for me. I just wanted to go on the record that I'm against the AEG Ontario Arena contract.
But...
I can't vote no on it because it was already approved, so...
Okay, so we have three. Motion already passes.
No, it'll be no for me. I didn't vote for the original contract, and I do not want to vote for the revised contract. I have nothing against the other contracts, so I was hoping we could vote for that particular one separately, but that's okay.
Comment? When you vote no, you're actually... If I understand right, it is available to the public as reference, reference H31, contract number C hyphen 13 hyphen 0017 hyphen 1, AEG Ontario Arena, and to reduce the rate from 30,000 to 20,000. So you're voting against the $10,000 savings, just so the public will understand?
No, Board Clerk, I understand that, but I didn't vote originally for the original contract. So if I didn't vote for the original contract, I shouldn't vote for the revised contract either.
That's fine.
So as I understand, we have 1, 2, 3 in favor, 1 no, and I will make a 4-1. I accept, this motion passes. Moving on, facilities and planning items?
I think we already voted on that one.
Facilities and items, discussion items. Okay, yeah, we did, okay. Discussion action items. Okay, we're on J. Discussion action items will be enacted in one motion unless members of the Board of Education request specific items to be discussed. So now we're going to approve items J through L. Do I have a motion to accept?
So moved.
Second.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries, J through L.
Dr. Seabron, did you want to bring up, did you want to call up Mr. Anderson?
Mr. Anderson, the new transportation manager.
For people personnel. Yeah. Thank you.
Muhammad, we'd like for you to, want to introduce a new transportation manager that was approved by the board.
Yeah, we have denied Mr. Anderson is here. I'd like to introduce Mr. Anderson to the Board of Education and the staff, and he's right here.
Thank you.
Welcome to Rialto. Thank you.
Make sure they pick up the athletes on time.
Next, we have comments from the board members and...
Yeah, we have new business that was approved right between M and L.
Okay, I believe we already voted on that.
Yeah, we approved it for tonight's board meeting. New business right between L and M.
Okay, so what you're saying is we approved it, and you want to add something for next future meeting?
Well, nobody else, if you want to open it up first and then anyone has anything.
Okay, let's do that then. We don't have it on the agenda yet, okay? It's not on the agenda, but we did vote on it, and we're adding another category of new business, okay? For future meetings, we're not going to vote on or take action. We're just going to add something for the agenda for a future time. Mr. Montez, did you have some comments?
I did. I just would like to first state that I'd like to see a more complete agenda moving forward, that according to Robert's Rules of Orders or just any regular parliamentary procedure, we include back new business and unfinished business, if we have any unfinished business, and give the board an opportunity to, if anyone has any new business, to bring forward new business. So the reason why I requested it for, to be brought back tonight, and I'm hoping that we can bring this back onto our agenda, because we are setting the lead for the rest of our committees that also hold true to the process procedure and Robert's Rules of Orders. I mean, even just basic local committees and clubs use unfinished business and new business. So what I wanted to add for a future board meeting, maybe for the next board agenda, I'd like to request staff to bring back for discussion to the board, previous item regarding the three-minute limit during board reports. I think it's very important that we bring that back for discussion and to take action on that, and of course, that would have to be agendized, so I'm requesting for that to be agendized, maybe at the next meeting or two, when there's time. And again, that would be the three-minute rule for board reports. Sometimes during our board reports, we have a lot of information we want to share with the community, and we want to make sure we have, if we need more than three minutes, we have a little extra time to get all of the information out to the public and be as transparent as possible. Thank you. That's all I have, if anybody else has anything.
Any other comments?
Just for the record, it would be to review Board Bylaw 9323, which is Section M on Page 5.
That is correct. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Martinez. Okay, so then next, we have comments from members of the Board of Education, and Mr. Martinez, would you like to, are you ready?
Thank you, President Ayala. Welcome back and Happy New Year to everyone, and I hope you had a wonderful Christmas, winter, whatever you celebrate at home, and a wonderful New Year as well. I look forward to seeing each one of you and doing business with you and representing you as best we can, best I can. I'm always available. You can either call through the office or email me through the district. All our web, our website has all our information on it. Our emails are there and it forwards right to us at home. So usually overnight, we can get back with you. Safety is a concern. It's in the news, it's on our minds, and I just want to support what Dr. Seabron had to say, that if you hear anything, let your schools know about it, let the police know about it. Don't think that anything is too small to report. Don't think that someone else is going to report it. Make sure that you take action on it if you hear something or suspect something. If you knew or know someone that is up to no good, well, it's your duty to report it as well, and I ask you to do so. I know that that is very, very trying, but when our kids are involved, it's everyone's duty to make sure that we make them as safe as possible, and I thank you. Thank you, President Ayala.
Well, thank you, Mr. Martinez. Next, perhaps our student board member, Ms. Yabora.
Thank you. The DSEC member talked about it earlier, but we have, our DSEC recognizes local leaders for Black History Month. It's coming up on February 6th, and we would love for all of the board members to come over and support us. And we had our meeting today, and Dr. Seabron showed up, and he said some really interesting stuff that is going to stick with us for a really, really long time. And we'd just like to say Happy New Year to everyone and have a nice evening.
Well, thank you. Nancy?
Well, first of all, I would like to say that I wanted to thank Principal Thompson and Morris Elementary School for their hospitality. They did provide us with an absolutely delicious dinner tonight, and I really appreciated that. However, as a former high school principal, I personally realize how very important every penny of every budget is to a principal. I assume that step-up funds were used to pay for our dinner, and that's permissible. However, that is the money that we use when we need so many things at the school site, when we have run out of money or we are running out of money. I feel very strongly, and I would hope other board members would agree with me, that feeding a large number of people like this is a huge expense, and I really feel that that money is much better spent on our students as it is supposed to be. Although I appreciate the hospitality very much, but in the future, I certainly hope that the principals do not feel obligated. I think it's become to be a bit of an expectation for the principals to provide dinner if the board meeting is held at the... board meeting is held at their school, and I feel that is wrong. It's also become a bit of a competition, and I know that there've been several very costly dinners provided. So from my point of view, as a former principal, I really, I've always wanted the money to go to the students, to the school sites, that's where it belongs. The board is perfectly capable of grabbing something to eat before the board meeting. Second thing, I wanted to bring this up in closed session, but we ran out of time. I'm very concerned about implementation of the core curriculum standards, which is coming right around the corner in two thousand fourteen, and I would like to request a presentation, including timelines and deadlines of where the district is at and where we are heading in preparing for this implementation, how and when the teachers are being trained, what degree of training is being provided, how we are supporting the schools financially, we are going to need a massive amount of technology, how those things are being addressed. So I would like to request either the next board meeting or the one after that, a presentation to update the board on where we are at with the implementation of the core standards. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. O'Kelly. Ms. Gilbert?
Thank you, President Ayala. First, I'd like to thank the staff and students at Morris for their hospitality for this evening. It's always a pleasure, as I've always said, to visit our schools, to see what is actually going on. Each school has a different culture, and when we are invited into your school, we get a taste of your culture. So thank you for your hospitality. Being an elected official allows people to know you that you may not know them. And this happens when you go out in the supermarkets and so forth, and over the years, I've run into a lot of parents and supporters. Usually, it's at State of Brothers, maybe just because that's the main supermarket that I shop at and a lot of people. But I said that to say, I was really pleased, I was in State of Brothers just the other day, and I met a gentleman and his daughter, and he said, hello, I know you. And I said, yes. He said, you're on the school board. And I just want to say that I am really pleased with what's going on in this district, and I just want to thank you for, for helping to make sure that my daughter and the rest of my children are getting a great education. So that was a pleasant conversation to have in the supermarket, and over the years, I've had such conversations, and I just wanted to share that with you. Also, over this break, I attended a Kwanzaa celebration at the Rialto Senior Center, which was put on by Carter High Schools. Now, this is remarkable because they were on their winter break, but they took time to do this for the community. And Ms. Yubora, thank you so much, because she was an integral part of the presentation, and I really enjoyed it. And the last thing I'd like to say is, over the past two months, we have lost two members of our Rialto family, and I would just like to order my condolences, three, four, someone said three? Three, three members of our Rialto family. And that doesn't happen a lot, but it just seems as though this year, we've lost quite a few members of our Rialto family. And I know yours, yours, the departments that they worked in and their families are going to miss them, so I'm just offering my condolences. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Gilbert. Well said. Mr. Montes?
Vice President.
Mr. Montes.
Thank you, thank you, President Ayala. Welcome back, everybody. Good evening, buenas noches, welcome back to school. First off, I'd like to thank Mrs. Thompson, thank you very much for your hospitality and welcoming us here to your school, and I want to thank all of your staff as well who helped you. I, I would first like to speak about something that I'm very excited about, that I witnessed at Rialto Middle School just before the break. I was picking up my, my boys from the Think Together program, and I seen some parents and some students in a room close by, so I went over for a little bit, and, and I got an opportunity to sit in for a little while and participate in Rialto Middle School's first Black Student Union Club through ASB, that was just chartered that night, they had their officers installed, and I was fortunate enough to be part of that. I just want to say that BSU, Black Student Union, is a club that is at most of our community colleges and at most universities. I think it's a wonderful club. I remember our BSU, when I was in high school and middle school, and they did wonderful things for the students, and not just for their club members, but for the general population, whether it's cultural events and fundraisers, or just different types of fun youth activities. I would like to see BSU spread throughout the rest schools and high schools, as long, also, as well as other clubs similar, for other students that would also like to start these types of clubs. Another thing that I wanted to speak about, and forgive me for, for being blunt, and probably one of the youngest board members on this board, but when I see a wrongdoing, I, I'm going to call it out, and I do not, I just want to make it clear, first, I want to apologize to Ms. O'Kelly and her family for not knowing that the installation and all of office board meeting was not being recorded. I was under the assumption that it was, and I want to apologize to her and her family and her friends on my own behalf as Vice President of the Board, because I should have made sure that that was being recorded. Of course, that's not my job, and it's my understanding, our superintendent had no knowledge of it as well, but I would like to tell our Chief of Staff, our Deputy Chief of Staff, to please make sure that never happens again to any of our board members or for any other important events. And then just one last thing, President Ayala, thank you. I wanted to speak about the dinners. The dinners are very delicious. I've only been able to attend very few of them, but they're very delicious, and today's dinner, believe me, I had my plate full. But I do agree with Ms. O'Kelly that we can afford our own meals, and perhaps that money that could be used for supplies, could be used for student supplies or for school supplies. So with that, thank you, and gracias.
Thank you, Mr. Mont, Vice President, Mr. Montes. I would first like to thank all in attendance tonight for taking time out of their busy schedule to be here tonight. From time to time, we get special guests and dignitaries who show up, and I would like to recognize Mr. Joe Olaghi for being in our meeting tonight. He's the President of the Lulac Inland Empire, and I know he does a lot of great things to take care of civil rights. Give him a hand. I would also like to thank Principal Marion Thompson and her staff for hosting our board meeting and for their gracious hospitality. I know you're here somewhere, there she is. Thank you so much. And I don't know if there's still a representative from Ann's Catering, but thank you so much for catering the event, much appreciated. On another note, we, we need to come up with a resolution to honor Congressman Joe Baca for his dedication and contributions that he has for our community and the kids while presiding as our Congressman for the past thirteen years. So we're working on it, and as we develop with more information, we'll get back to you on this. It'll be a challenge, but we're going, we're going to do what we can to, to honor this We also have an announcement here, Sarah Garcia, would you please stand? This is our new field representative for Assemblyman Woman Brown, Assemblywoman Brown. Congratulations. I appreciate everything mentioned tonight, even though we may not agree at times, but please rest assured out there in the audience, that I know each board member here, and they have their best interests in their heart for this community. They care about kids, they care about this community, and they're going to keep moving us forward in the right direction. That's why there's not just one, two, or three, that's why there's five of us up here, and this cabinet is also doing a marvelous job. With that said, do we have a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
End of the meeting.